Okay. We'll call this meeting to order. This is the Andover Planning Commission and Border Zoning Appeals for May 18th, 2018. We'll start with roll call. Stephanie?
Stephanie Gillespie.
Lynn Heath.
Brian Lindaback.
Gary Israel.
Alex Isarchin.
All right. And we have some minutes to approve from April 17, 2018. And I know maybe at least one of you weren't there, so you might abstain and let the record know who was abstaining.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes as written up.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Mr. Israel and a second by Mr. Heath. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any abstentions? Two abstentions? You were here, okay, good. Just one abstention. Thank you so much. And we have some communications, committee and staff reports. I don't know that there's a whole lot to go over on those, but Les, feel, share what you know.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
No one has any questions of staff?
No.
Okay. Well, let's just get into this. We've got item number five. It's a zoning case, case number Z 2018 dash two. This is a public hearing on an application for a change of zoning district classification from present R1 single-family residential to R3 multifamily residential district located at 610 South Ruth, Andover, Kansas. The applicant desires to zone the property in order to demolish the existing dilapidated single-family dwelling and construct two duplexes. Staff is not concerned with the change in the land use, but is concerned with additional traffic on the gravel street. Other than that, staff knows no reason not to approve the application conditioned upon replating in order to contemplate right-of-way dedications and other such improvements to the street. And we have our zoning report. Looks fairly straightforward. We've got roughly a half-acre size lot, looks like. And Les, if there's anything beyond, maybe tee it up for us here, beyond that zoning report?
I think that pretty well summarizes. You can see that it is a platted lot today. The change in zoning would set up the conditions for replating. We feel that that's the only way to address the need for additional public improvements, most likely street improvements because of the change in zoning and the added traffic to the gravel road.
Is the sewer along Ruth, out of curiosity? Or is it?
The sewers are in the road.
Well, before we call up anybody or, you know, have you guys answer any more questions from staff, I might go through the usual housekeeping on our zoning cases and the like. This case was notified in the Butler County Times Gazette on April 21st, 2018, and notices were mailed to the applicant and 12 owners of record in the area of notification on April 18th, 2018. I'll determine that 20 days has elapsed since that time, and unless there's evidence of the contrary from anybody present, I'll declare that proper notification has been given for this case. All right, seeing none, I'll declare that proper notification has been done. And as far as board members here, do we have any ex parte communication or reasons to? Okay. Very good. All right. With that, do you have any questions, Les, at this time, or shall we ask the applicant to come forward?
Have the applicant come forward.
Okay. The applicant, if they're here, come forward and share anything that we don't already know.
If you'd like me to stand or say?
Just state your name and address and that sort of thing.
I'm Jim Ackerman with Eagle Investments. My address is 14601 East Sundance. And I do have a couple of handouts, if you guys would like to see them. This kind of gives you a...
State the property currently and kind of what I would put on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
There's a number of lots sold there.
Sure. And, you know, everybody realizes we're not, you know, voting on a style of house. We're just looking at the merits of the case here. Well, this is helpful.
Okay. It's just, and what I would propose to put on would be similar to the duplexes that I believe are across Kellogg. I believe it, was it one-way?
I think it's one-wood place.
Yeah, that's it. So, very similar to that.
Mm-hmm. And do you have any objection to the staff comments of replating and setting things up properly?
That'd be fine.
Any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I just have the question of building two duplexes. So, how many total dwellings are we looking at?
Total of four.
A total of four. So, in like this depiction that you gave, each, so each garage would represent two separate household dwellings?
Correct. Oh, no, each garage would represent one household dwelling, so you'd have another duplex beside that.
So, two of these units side by side?
Correct.
I'm just trying to figure out how that works to get access to Ruth.
Do you have?
Because one of these looks like...
Les, could you speak to that?
I think we're probably getting a little bit into the weeds about the buildings. We're really talking about the zoning here tonight. I'm sure that there could be reasonable access on the property. Remember that these are, would be under the same ownership, so they could share a driveway rather than each independent dwelling having direct access to the street.
Any more questions of the applicant? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open up to a public comment. If there are folks in the neighborhood that would like to speak, feel free to step up to the mic. Please do state your name and address for the record clearly.
I have my bifocals on, so I'm going to have to hold this up here.
All right.
My name is Mike Payne. I live at 615 South Ruth, right across the street. I've lived there since 1995, and three years before that, I was in one of the apartments north of Clyde at 550 Deveron for three years. So, I'm very aware of the area. I'm aware of the evolution and the struggles we've had and the good things we've had as well. We definitely evolved over the years, but south of Clyde has always been single-family residents. North of that are the apartments and duplexes and et cetera. We're mostly retired folks in the beginning. Then we had periods of lots of kids, then younger families, and now there seems to be a move where there's a lot of young families with kids. We have a lot more kids right now in the neighborhood. The entire neighborhood is evolving. We have plenty of problems, trust me, just like everyone else in older communities do have. But the houses are all being improved. There's driveways being improved, et cetera. Over the years, we've had good times and bad times. Let me repeat it again. Through it all, we have had single-family residents south of Clyde, which is where this is. Then we were annexed by Andover. During the Andover Annex, there was considerable bitterness, obviously, because we'd kind of been on our own for some time. But there were definitely pluses, and there were definitely minuses with the annexation. I think we've all come to grips with that, and in fact, I personally kind of like it. So, the pluses are there. When we had the meetings on annexation, if you remember, if some of you were there, it got pretty heated quite a bit. One of the items that it was heated about was that we were told that without question, from Clyde Street South would remain single-family residences. There may very well be a proliferation of apartments, duplexes, and et cetera, north of Clyde. That's the way it's always been, by the way. Even the Highway 54 Expansion Project, which you've posted on the internet, it also puts that as R1 in our entire area, up to R3 where the apartments are now, which is just great. We have nothing against R3 apartments. Personally, of course, the general clientele is much more transient when you have a neighborhood who has got its problems anyway and evolving into a good legitimate neighborhood. The last thing you want is more apartments, more cars on the street. The car is going up and down the street now with that dirt road is just absolutely a pain. You dust every day. I mean, that's just one of the really bad things in the area. Let me repeat again to the houses, driveways, garages. All this has been improved. Houses are being built. We have a few new houses here and there. Houses that were moved in and stood vacant for some time are now lived in. We have a pretty good community building. In fact, of all the ISORs that used to be there, the entire community looks pretty good with the exception of this one property, which has been dilapidated for a long time and sitting there as a major ISOR. We've paid taxes for years and years and years, the people that live there in those single-family residents. We've endured hardships. We've had good times, and we hope more to come. We're not Green Valley, and we're not Bel Air, but we are proud of our single-family residences in Andover, Kansas. We're kind of getting used to being in Andover, Kansas, and we're proud of that, too. Please don't let someone with a great deal on a rundown property put apartments in our single-family zoning. You know what happens. You get your foot in the door, next one's easier. Pretty soon, any poor retired person or anybody else back there starts in. Somebody with money and a developer is going to run in and grab it and throw some more apartments in there. Everybody's happy. I was absolutely flabbergasted just then to hear that you're talking four apartments, four apartments in an area that's a very small lot. As a matter of fact, it's the same lot as mine, and I can't say, because I've got a lot of room on either side of my little house either. Parking and traffic on that road has always been a big problem, and it will continue to be so. I can't even imagine with four car places on the other side that you're going to have a heck of a time with cars coming and going all days, all hours, day and night. And in fact, they won't. I can tell you exactly what will happen, because if you go to the other apartments around the circle or down the street, you drive very slowly, because most of the cars park out on the curb, and that's exactly what's going to happen here. So, where my driveway is, right at the edge of the driveway for this one, I'll be fighting, trying to get out of the dead gum driveway, and there'll be cars parked there all the time. The developer doesn't care about that. He wants to get it in there and get it rented. So, kind of in closing, I would say, don't add another hurdle for us to get over. The councils that were here before you chose R1. During the annexation, we were assured it's R1. We ask that you keep that designation and support us as we continue to evolve as an Andover single facility or single-place facility. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I do have one question.
Yes?
Do you know how many single-family dwellings are right in that area?
Well, it's one of the more populated single families. I mean, our entire street is now filled up. It's house after house after house after house after house on both sides of the street. There's not gaps. It's all the way down and all the way around now.
But down Ruth, could you tell me, without looking at Google Maps or something?
Yeah.
I have no idea how many homes are...
I wish, I wish I knew. I should have known that, I guess. I can't tell, we're looking at that either with that particular view, but it's a very, it's a circle, obviously. And over the years, as we have evolved and worked on our places and et cetera, that evolution has produced more people. In other words, now we're getting young people with families. We've getting, we, all of us retired, old retired folks are thinning out and going away. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of people there, and there's a lot of good people there. I know we have reputations as having a lot of problems and et cetera, but I think that's growing issues. There's a lot of good people there, and we're very proud of our area as it stands. Please consider that. A developer can certainly find another area to put an apartment. For heaven's sakes, put a nice big house right there, and I'll even mow the lawn a little bit if you do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the speaker?
Nope.
Okay, seeing none. Next speaker, please. And I'd just like to remind you to try to reduce the amount of repetition. We've heard some really good comments there, so...
Hello, my name is Linda Ferrison. I live at 642 South Ruth in Andover, and I moved here about 14 years ago because it was a single-dwelling residence. I came from an area north in Wichita that had lots and lots of duplexes, so I know. But anyway, I just wanted to stay a single-dwelling neighborhood like it was when I moved in, reiterate on what my neighbor said. I counted, and I think there's like 20 houses in our neighborhood. I've got one of the little bit bigger lots, and so, but please, just consider us and keep it a single-dwelling neighborhood.
Thank you. Any questions, Speaker?
I'm Rick Stevenson. I live at 620 Ruth, next door to this ISOR. And I'll tell you, I'd rather see the ISOR than see duplexes go in here, because duplexes is going to cause a lot more problems, a lot more headaches for us, and you're going to have a lot of thievery going on, because people, they don't care who's living in there. And it's going to run down my property value, and it's a mess. And I agree with my neighbors here, you know. I've been there since 1987, so just go with what we have to say, please. That's all I have to say.
Do you live north or south of the?
I live right next door to it, south of it.
Okay.
I have the big, one of the bigger lots here.
621?
620.
620, oh, just next door, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, 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 yep.
And if there's, no one else is here to speak against it or for it? If the applicant would like to rebut any of their comments, now would be the time.
I do have a drawing of how I propose to do the parking. If that would be something you guys would like to observe at this time, if that's something, if this is the time and place for that?
You know, I'm not, I'm not so certain it's imperative that we know, but if you, if you think it would be helpful, feel free.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
You guys were talking about replating.
Please step up to the mic. Thank you.
I was curious exactly what that meant.
Sure.
You guys all know what it means, but...
Certainly. Yeah, if you could state your name, and for the record, just get all that on the record there.
Yeah, my name's Kathy Stevenson. I live at 620 Ruth.
Just to the south?
Just to the south.
Okay.
What exactly does that mean? Replod or replod?
Les might be able to explain it best, but I mean, it's basically resetting the ownership boundaries as well as, you know, the entitlements that go along with that, you know, property lines, easements, right-of-way dedications of that sort. And so, Les?
How do you change the property lines or the, do you take it away from someone else? I mean, where are you getting the?
We go to, we go to the same process that we're going through right now for the, for the plating or for the zoning hearing, but also for a plat. And a little bit different in that you don't have as much public notification, but we bring it back to the public and, which is this body here, and we look at the right-of-way dedications, whether, if there's an extra public street, no, they can't just take your property. You own that fee title. They would have to come buy that from you, should they need that for one reason or another. So, Mark?
You can't force that. You can't say, well, this guy wants to build whatever, and he's just going to come in and take your property.
Absolutely not. No, that's not how it works. No.
Okay.
This is America.
Well, I know it is, but, you know, things have happened before, so...
Yeah, yeah.
There have been cases like that.
Okay, well...
All right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I have another question. On the bottom of the letter, it says that this can come up again without notifying the neighbors, you know, without notification. So, does that mean, no offense, does that mean you're going to listen to us and do what the hell you want to do anyway? You're just not going to notify us?
We definitely take everything into consideration when we decide on matters such as this, and we do have, we are not the last stop here. We do, this property does end up and get officially approved or denied at the city council, which is the governing body. And so, at the end of this proceeding, I will read off some, some resources that will be beneficial to understand of the next steps of this process.
Well, I do have a problem with parking, because most vehicles, most families have two vehicles, because nobody works in the same place or the same direction. And if you have four there, you're going to have two cars per dwelling, and then they're not going to park. Nobody's going to want to park in front of one another, because I go to work first or whatever, and then the street's going to be filled. And I do believe that if, if for some reason it passes, God, I'm praying that it don't, but if it does, then I think the person that's asking for it needs to widen the street so there's adequate parking, and they need to pay for it. We don't, because we don't want it.
Okay.
And that's my opinion, honey.
Well, thank, thank you. And Les, if there's anything, or Mark, if there's anything that you feel like you need to share with her or the audience as a whole?
I think you pretty, pretty well summarized it, Brian. What I always tell folks is that zoning is a process, not an event. Just because you've attended this one meeting doesn't mean that the process is over. Like Brian said, their recommendation goes to the city council, who actually adopts the ordinance that would make the change, and that would be on June 12.
We do appreciate all the comments and the fact that you're here, speaking for your, your neighborhood and for your property.
Brian, we do, we did receive written communication from a neighbor as well that I'd like to read and make sure it gets on the record.
Yeah, please do.
So, written communication from Gordon Buller at 737 South Ruth Avenue. "My problem with the zoning change on South Ruth, this is a residential neighborhood. With a duplex added, you have transient people that move in and out and in and out, and they have no vested interest in the neighborhood, and only bad things come with people coming and going. I own a rental home by a duplex, and it has never been a good thing, and for this reason I oppose a zoning change. It will not enhance our neighborhood in any way."
Thank you, Lance.
What was the address on that?
737 South Ruth Avenue.
So, it's off the bottom of the page.
So, I think we've, to summarize some of the concerns, you know, we have some concerns for, it doesn't fit in the neighborhood because it's a different zoning classification than the rest, which is surrounding this is R1, and then Ag1 to the, to the east. And this is just to help us, kind of help our thought process here and make it known. And then we have some concerns for parking and, and the transit nature of a duplex in So, with that, is there some discussion that?
I have a question for staff. Les or Mark, is there any plans for paving Ruth in the future?
We have nothing in our CIP. Many years ago, before this property was annexed into the city, it was provided with sewer lines by a county sewer district. Then, gosh, and it's been 10 years or more ago, the property was annexed and a water project was put in. And at that time, we told the neighborhood that we would be open to a petition for street improvements if the neighborhood was in favor of it. We've not heard anything from the neighborhood, and therefore, we've never put anything in our CIP to improve the streets.
Okay.
Yep.
Les, I did have one question, and that's how this property fits within the 54 corridor plan?
I wanted to get to that when we got to the checklist.
Sure.
This property shows multifamily in the US 54 corridor study on the east side of Ruth Street.
On the east side of Ruth?
On the west side remains single-family in that plan.
And how far, much south does it extend the multifamily? And just for everybody's benefit, this is a comp plan, or it's a, it's a, it's a guesstimate of what the future could behold there, so it doesn't necessarily dictate?
It, it shows to the extent of the corridor study, so it would be a quarter of a mile from the center of the highway.
So, some distance, we're getting?
About halfway into the Mecca Acres subdivision, because the subdivision is a, is a full half-mile deep from US 54.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question? All that you have posted on the internet, I looked at that also, and it definitely showed that it was R1 only, and where it makes the circle, past that, it was R3. But is there different ones, or is maybe what I looked at, the original one or something? I just looked at that this afternoon, so for sure.
I'm looking at it right now on the internet.
Or is that something that you guys have another version of?
No, I'm looking at the version that's on the internet right now on my phone, just to, just to confirm that.
And Les is very familiar with it, because he spent years looking at it.
How many years?
Yeah. So, I think that's a, that's an important factor, but not the only factor here.
Yep.
So, any other comments, deliberation, or do I go through our findings of fact? Any other comments deliberation, or do I go through our findings of fact? I think that means we should go through our fa- factors and findings.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Does anybody want to volunteer to read those since I do enough talking? Looking for page two of six.
Yeah. Oh, I gotta get that back out again.
I can read those.
Thanks.
I'm sure I've got all of them here. Factors and findings. What are the existing uses and their character and condition on the subject property and the surrounding neighborhood? See adjacent existing land uses on pages one and four.
Mm-hmm.
And. We don't have anything from staff. Any comments from anyone on that?
I just think that, you know, the adjacent land uses are the, the, the R one and, and A one.
Okay. Number two, what is the current zoning of the subject property and that of the surrounding neighborhood in relationship to the requested change?
The same.
Same.
Same. Number three, is the length of time that the subject property has remained undeveloped or vacant as zone a factor in the consideration? And from staff, no.
And I would agree. Everybody agree?
Number four, would the request correct an error in the application of these regulations?
Nope.
Staff says no.
And we agree. I agree.
Agree.
Yep.
Number five, is the request caused by change or changing conditions in the area of the subject property? And if so, what is the nature and significance of such change or changing conditions? And staff says there.
I think the only thing it would be is just the improvement in the economy and, and stuff like that, so. It's not, nothing we've done.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know that there's any changing conditions that.
That reply to this, no.
The cause.
Okay. Number six, do adequate sewer disposal and water supply and all other necessary public facilities, including street access, exist or can they be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the subject property? From staff, public water and sewer are available. The gravel street is in poor condition because of the traffic volume and poor drainage.
I would agree with that.
Would we agree? Okay. Number seven, would the subject property need to be platted or replatted in lieu of dedications made for right-of-ways, easements, access control or building setback lines? Staff has said yes.
Mm-hmm.
There'd be a dedication of thirty-two foot half-street right-of-way in lieu of plating. Number eight, would a screening plan be necessary for existing and/or potential use of the property? Staff says no.
I agree.
I agree.
Number nine, are suitable vacant lands or buildings available or not available for development that currently has the same zoning as requested? Staff has said none in the area. Would agree?
Agree. There's probably some in the city, but not in the area.
There's plenty in the city, we know of that.
Plenty in the city, but in that area.
Right.
Right.
Number ten, if the request is for business or industrial use, are such uses needed to provide more services or employment opportunities? And staff says not applicable. Would agree. Number eleven, is the subject property suitable for the current zoning to which it has been restricted?
Yes.
Staff said yes. Number twelve, to what extent would removal of the restrictions, such as the approval of the zoning request, be detrimental, detrimentally affect other property in the neighborhood? Staff has said increased activity and traffic.
And I concur with that. Agree.
Number thirteen, would the request be consistent with the purpose of the zoning district classification and the intent and purpose of these regulations? Staff has said yes.
I'd agree.
Okay. Number fourteen, is the request in conformance with the comprehensive plan and does it further enhance the implementation of the plan? And staff has said yes. The complimentary, uh, comprehensive plan supports a variety of housing choices. And number fifteen, what is the nature of the support or opposition to the request? Staff has said adjacent neighbors are concerned with increased activity, traffic and parking.
And I think the like properties as well as what they're looking for. If I'm, if I heard that right.
Number sixty.
Keep it R one.
R one, yeah.
Yeah, R one. Number sixteen, are there any in, informational materials or recommendations available from knowledgeable persons or experts which would be helpful in this, this evaluation? And staff has said, staff is concerned with the burden created by the four dwelling units of the thirty to forty traffic trips on the gravel road.
Concur.
Number seventeen, by comparison, does the relative gain to the public health, safety and general welfare outweigh the loss in property value or the hardship imposed upon the applicant by not approving the request?
Boy, that double, double negative here.
I don't see any gain to the public health and safety.
Any gain? Yeah, no, definitely.
No, no gain. And, and as far as the hardship, I mean, they could certainly, uh, build a house that's more suitable and more desirable than what's there. So.
Having gone through all those, I do have another question for staff.
I do too.
I know Les, it's part of the comprehensive plan and I've been on a lot of those. How soon or in the, is there anything in the near future that is gonna be happening on the fifty-four corridor plan?
As far as we know, the Department of Transportation still has the freeway project on their long-range plan for a timeframe about twenty nineteen, tw- or twenty, twenty-nine to twenty-thirty.
Okay. Then if we were to not approve this, the applicant's request, it could be brought up again in the future, correct?
There are no restrictions on reapplying.
Okay.
My question had more to do with, uh, I know we kinda went from R one to R three. Uh, did you talk with the applicant about the possibilities of R two? And, uh, I know that you can't do a duplex in R two.
No.
But, uh, is that, was that even discussed?
No, that was not discussed.
Okay. And that would, of course, keep things in the single-family com- compatibility.
I, I think I understand what you're headed for there, Brian. There is enough land area there for two R two, single-family residential lots.
Correct.
With a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet each.
Certainly. Okay. Any, any of those items stick out to you of reasons to either support or deny, uh, or not support the request?
An item sixteen stands out to me.
As a reason to not support or to?
As a reason not to support.
And not to support. And.
I'd have to agree with that.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
I, I think number fifteen is, is, uh, goes without saying, uh, as for a reason not to support, certainly all the, uh, many neighbors, uh, came out in opposition. But again, that's by itself is not a, a single reason to deny.
Uh, number twelve would also be increased activity and traffic, so that would be a negative.
And I would add on number six as well as a negative with the additional wear and tear on the existing street conditions.
I hear, I hear a lot, a trend here.
Well, if we're in that direction, number, um, eleven, where it says, is this land suitable for its current zoning? And the answer is yes.
So we're kinda, we're, we're saying it's suitable, but in maybe a different time or condition, possibly?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I think that's important, cause it does seem to contradict itself if we say one thing, but then have another thing.
Well, ten years from now, that story.
Certainly. Well, what say you?
Well, okay. Lynn, you gonna do it?
Well, you go ahead. I'm not, I'm not picky. I've done this before.
Okay. Having considered the evidence of the hearing and the factors to evaluate the rezoning application, I, Gary Israel, move that we recommend to the governing body that case number Z dash two zero one eight dash zero two be disapproved to change the zoning district classification from the R one, single-family residential district to the R three, multifamily residential district based on the findings of the planning commission as recorded in the summary of this hearing and that the following conditions be attached to this recommendation. And those are based on number six, eleven, twelve, fifteen and sixteen.
Okay. We have a motion?
Oh, a second.
And a second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We do have some closing remarks. Uh, this case will be forwarded on to the governing body with the planning commission's recommendations and a written summary of the hearing for consideration at the regular heating, hearing, uh, meeting on June twelfth, twenty eighteen, which begins at seven PM in the same room. If a protest petition is filed against the change of zoning classification or, well, in this case zoning change, uh, it must be received by the clerk fourteen days after tonight. Uh, so that would be May twenty-ninth at no later than four thirty, uh, PM. And if there are, uh, property owners signed and notarized petitions, protest petitions with accurate legal descriptions from the owners of record of twenty percent or more of any real property, uh, proposed to be rezoned, uh, the, or owners of record of twenty-four, twenty percent or more of total property within the official area of notification, and those are notified, that's the official notification, both inside and outside the city, not counting public street right-of-way, then such change shall not be passed except with a three-fourth majority vote. So, thank you for your, uh, attendance tonight and, uh, we'll call the next item.
Okay.
All right. This is item number six. This is a recommendation to the governing body for an intent to annex an unplotted tract of land, uh, located at the southeast corner of thirteenth and one fifty-ninth in Butler County. Uh, the US, uh, the school district, let's just say that, uh, USD three eighty-five desires to annex the subject property in order to construct a new metal arc elementary school. Uh, all public infrastructure either is available or can be readily, uh, extended to serve the site. And staff knows no reason not to approve the petition. So just everybody understand this is a recommendation, um, and it is a annexation petition. We like to give, uh, our opinion on that, uh, to the, to the council as well. Uh, this seems very straightforward. Uh, however, uh, there is one thing that goes along with this and, um, I will, I will let, uh, Les or, or Mark share if they care. Uh, I might give a little spiel and, and just let them add to it if, uh, there's apparently a, uh, fi- a document that was filed today, uh, prior to, you know, after the case has been notified, uh, but there is a neighboring property that wishes to, uh, 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 claim adverse possession on a portion of the property. Uh, we're not gonna get into the details of that tonight because that's not really, uh, what we're here to talk about, other than the fact that there could be a, an adjustment to the property line, the common property line sometime later in the future, or there may not be an adjustment. So I just wanted to share that, uh, with you and, and certainly staff, if there's something that would need to be articulated more clearly than that. I could read the memo, however, uh, it's just more reading. Okay. So this is an annexation case and I think everybody has noticed that it is a substantial, uh, annexation. So rough, is that roughly forty acres less? Forty-nine acres at a butt, KTA on the south, thirteenth on the north, one fifty-ninth on the west. Anything else that we should know about, Les?
I think you've explained it pretty well, Brian.
Thank you. If anybody would like to, um, ask any questions, now's the time, or, uh, we can open it up to public comment, should anybody wish to, to speak on it directly. Uh, do you guys have any additional questions? All right. We'll open it up to public comment, uh, so if there's anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item, please do.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Paul Schwartz. My wife and I own the property directly to the east of this property, which borders it on its east side, our west side, all the way from thirteenth to, uh, the turnpike. Uh, our address for the record is eleven eleven West thirteenth. This annexation has the same problem as we're going to address in the rezoning that has been applied for, for this project. Uh, and that is, it's an improper and erroneous description of the property by virtue of the land that is adjacent to our property and to this property. And it is a strip of land that is approximately twenty-three feet wide and goes down from there to, uh, close to zero, if not zero, along this whole boundary. Now, the, I don't know whether you've been provided with, uh, my letter that I sent to the, uh, to Mr. Magnus or not. It describes exactly what we're talking about. Do you have it?
I think, I think we were all provided a letter that I think articulated, uh, the bulk of what was.
Here's what I provided.
Okay, thank you.
And it gives you, and. Very specific in brief terms and accurate terms, what the problem is here is that this is an inaccurate description of the property to be annexed or to be repl- rezoned. The problem is, in terms of annexation, as you know, you cannot annex any property that affects any property of twenty-one acres or more. So when you. So when you annex the property you're talking about as described, you're going to affect a property of ours, which is over forty acres, and cannot be annexed unilaterally by the city. Therefore, you are making an invalid annexation by making this move. It's very simple. What needs to happen is a survey of that tree line, that hedge fence line that's been there at least since nineteen sixty-eight, and probably forty years before then, that's the property line of these two pieces of property. I understand that that survey has already been done. All you need to do is take that survey and use it as the property line, and you've got this whole problem satisfied, as far as I'm concerned. It's that simple. For some reason, neither the city nor the school is willing to take that step. Why, I don't know.
So this boundary dispute has been, has occurred for some time?
The boundary dispute, what, what, the essence of adverse possession is as is described in that letter. It is that no claim can be made for a piece of property that has been held in open, continuous, exclusive possession for more than fifteen years. This property has been held in open, continuous, and exclusive possession for probably, at least since nineteen sixty-eight. So that's a whole lot more than fifteen years.
Well, we're certainly not going to get into the details of that, that's a different kind of hearing, so this is, this is a hearing on annexation.
Exactly.
And so.
That's the reason we filed our complaint, petition today with Butler County, is to make a quiet title, I mean, action, to determine that. But while you go forward here, you're making an invalid annexation, because that particular description is improper and incorrect.
Okay. And have you been able to provide a survey of your own to dispute that description?
I don't need to.
Okay.
The dispute is laying there on the ground with the trees.
Okay.
But apparently, the trees have been surveyed, according to, according to the city, those trees have been surveyed and delineated exactly where they are. So it's not, it's not rocket science at this point. Any questions?
I guess I would ask, sir. Are you saying the legal description provided, or put forth for the annexation, is not in concert with the title the school district received on the property? Have they submitted, have they submitted the proper legal description in accordance with the title work they had done on the sale of the property?
They had a title policy for that piece of property. What the property said, the title opinion says, as virtually all of them do, this policy does not ensure against possession of those which would not be disclosed by a survey. Obviously, this would be disclosed by a survey, and has been disclosed by a survey, and was disclosed by a survey before they closed. So they're in full knowledge of what's going on here.
But what they submitted was what the result of their title search, correct?
I don't know what they submitted on the annexation, because I've not seen, that document was not made notice to me, so I don't know what they.
I guess, then I would ask the Director of Community Development, is the description, what they submitted through their title search?
The, the description was provided by a surveyor, and it, it substantially complies with the records of Butler County. This, this dispute is a civil dispute between two property owners, the petition for annexation, the application for zoning, were both made based on the record.
Right. So what I'm suggesting is, we're dealing with the legal title handled as he has a dispute, like you said, but I think a couple things that need to be made clear, based on his statements, is the, the school district has requested the annexation. So the acreage isn't, isn't part of, part of the factor at all, they've requested it, the landowners requested the annexation. If this was involuntary, if it was unilateral on the city's part, then we'd have a different discussion. But the landowners requested the annexation with the title work they'd done. I understand his, his dispute, but I just want to get a few things clear here.
Well, that makes no difference, you still can't annex more than twenty-one acres. And what you're going to do, if you carry through here, you're going to annex about an acre of property that you are not entitled to annex.
But we can annex more than twenty-one acres if requested.
No, you can't not of mine.
Well, okay, and you're, you're the one saying it's yours, we haven't had a ruling on that or anything like that, so.
If you, if, this is my problem, this has been going on since May third. It seemed to me like it was a very simple problem that could be taken care of. Obviously, nobody cared to do it, to help me do it. Now, we have now filed a lawsuit to do it. What you need to do, if you're going to do this correctly, because it has to be annexed before you can rezone that property, if you're going to do that, you need to continue this hearing until that lawsuit is determined, and then we'll go forward.
Yeah. If there's any other questions of the speaker? Yeah, okay. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name's Tim Cannell, I'm an attorney from El Dorado, I represent the school district. So a couple of things, there's usually two sides to every story. Number one, the letter that you got from Mr. Schwartz saying he was making a claim about a week ago, that's the first time we knew anything about the claim. Mr. Schwartz and Mr. White, who's the superintendent of the district, had a personal conversation in March, and there was nothing said about any adverse possession, so this is news to us. The district, as you understand, is building a number of new improvements, and we need to move ahead. We need to keep this rolling, we, we understand that Mr. Schwartz is making a claim, that's fine, but we have a deed that was given to us by the previous owner that describes the property that you're looking at, that gives us title. He's making a claim, that's all the further we've gotten so far. So I'm asking that you move ahead with the annexation, we'll deal with whatever problems that need to be addressed, we understand that there are some things that need to be worked out, but we'd ask you to keep moving the process forward, and let's see if we can't get this resolved as we move along. That's where we're coming from.
Okay. Thank you. I know, I know that, that seems very clear, I'm just out of curiosity, from the surveyor, is there any, anything different to shed light on, as far as the boundary goes, if you wouldn't mind?
No, there's nothing else. The legal that was presented with the annexation request, and the same thing is going to be true with the zoning request, came off of the deed that the school district, when they purchased the property.
Okay. And, and things have been checking out from a, from, from a survey standpoint as well?
Well, there, there's, their fence goes from twenty-one, twenty-three feet to over the line, to back to eleven, and back down to the corner, so the fence does not match the deed.
Okay, and that's the crux of the situation.
That's the, the conversation going on.
Okay, very good. Well, I think, I think we can act on this item tonight, with the caveat that whatever boundary disputes be resolved, whether now or in the future, just that their property would not be the one that, you know, the, the objecting property would not be annexed, and it would only be the school's property, whatever is resolved from these claims of, of record, and if I didn't speak to that, I know I've got something from the attorney, and I'll write, I'll read that at, with the zoning hearing, or if you'd prefer, I just read it now, I can, I can certainly do that.
I don't know if we need to, do we?
The city attorney has provided some language, when we get to the zoning case, his advice on the petition for annexation is that the petition for annexation was based on the record.
Title.
By the owner of record, by title, and that there was no way to circumvent that, even though this suit has been filed, as you said, this, this suit has been filed, but it hasn't been settled.
Certainly.
There's no order yet.
Correct. All right, well.
And again, in both of the annexation and the zoning, you're only making a recommendation to the city council, you're, you're not the final action.
Certainly.
That's almost a month away.
Everybody kind of understand where we're coming from?
Yes.
All right. So.
The problem with what Les just said, is yes, it goes to the county, I mean, to the city commission, but that's not a public hearing. There's nothing that I can say in front of that body. This is my trial right here. If I don't get my result here, I have no recourse.
Sir, if you could come to the microphone, I, I will tell you, we are not the governing body of ownership and boundaries, so this is not the place or, or time to talk about ownership or boundaries.
No, it is the place to talk about whether you have the authority to annex property which is not applied for, to be annexed.
And I think if you, if you would understand what we just said, is that whatever the results of your claim, we are going to put in the record that, that we are recommending that the school's ownership be annexed into the property, whatever that might be.
I understand that, but what I'm trying to point out is that your hearing is the only trial of this matter, when it gets to the city, nobody else can talk.
This is the city.
This is it. And you told the people in that previous case, a little bit different than that, you misled them a little bit, that they could talk to the city, and they can't.
Okay. Well, I don't know that we can say anything more to help this situation out. Les?
This is just one step in the process.
That's right.
The next step is before the governing body, and one of the things that the mayor will ask is if those involved felt that they had a, a fair hearing. And anyone can stand up at that point and interject.
Certainly. All right. With that, I would like to have someone entertain a motion that includes the ownership of the school district in question.
Does anybody else have any comments, or?
Yeah, did you guys have any comments?
No.
I thought we were pretty, pretty clear there, so yeah.
I meant out there, not us.
Oh, certainly, yeah. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the bench, and I think we've, I think I understand everything, so I apologize if I might be jumping, jumping the gun here, but if anybody was ready to make a motion. This is a recommendation.
That go in with that? Or is that?
That's separate, just on the zoning.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, I, Gary Israel, move that we recommend to the governing body that the intent to annex an unplatted tract located at the southeast corner of West Central Avenue and One Fifty-Ninth Street East in Butler County, Kansas, be approved, based on the deed. Les, you gonna help me out there?
You, you said West Central, it's West Thirteenth Street? We've provided you with that typo correction.
Okay. Make that correction, West Thirteenth Street and One Fifty-Ninth Street East in Butler County. That was my motion with my correction.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And, so this, this will be heard by the city council at a later date. The, what date is that? The twelfth, okay, of June.
Hopefully, all that other stuff gets ironed out.
Certainly. So we have an associated case, this is item number seven. This is zoning case, two thousand eighteen dash zero three, there's a public hearing on application for a change in zoning classification from the present Butler County AG forty to R two, single-family, and the reason why it's AG twenty is because we have not annexed it in, and it would have been A one, had that happened. And then, so this would be R two, single-family, on property located at three one five West Thirteenth, Anover, Kansas. This is USD three eighty-five, and they desire to have a zone change on the subject property in order to construct a new metal arc elementary school, and staff knows no reason not to approve the application conditioned upon replating. All right. And I see the legal description here.
Yep.
All righty. We will cover a couple of housekeeping items. Are there any disqualifications from members on the board?
No.
No disqualifications? And no ex parte communication?
No.
Okay. There was a notification on this case as well, in the Butler County Times Gazette on April twenty-first, twenty eighteen, notices were mailed to the applicant, and fourteen real property owners of record in the area of notification on April eighteenth, twenty eighteen, and I'll determine that twenty days has elapsed, and if anybody here present gives contrary, then we'll notify that a proper notification has been given. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare that proper notification has been given.
Yes.
And we have a, our zoning report that was provided to us by staff. Any questions of staff on the zoning report? If there are no questions of staff, I will ask the applicant if they have anything further to, to add to this, this item.
Phil Meyer with Baughman Company, agent for the applicant, with me here is Mr. Tim Cannell, counsel for the school district. I don't think we have anything else to add. I will be glad to answer any questions you have, if you have any, or maybe reserve the right to come back and answer some questions if Mr. Schwartz provides some.
Sure. Any questions of the applicant that you can think of now?
Nope.
All right.
No.
All right. And is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item?
Yes, sir, for the record, Paul Schwartz, we own the property directly to the east of this property, eleven eleven West Thirteenth. What we've already discussed in the annexation, a lot of it goes to what we're talking about here, so we don't need to retrace some of that. However, here, it's a little bit different in that the legal description is incorrect. So, we have a problem to start with, that you're zoning something that is not properly described, and the, the regulations provide that the applicant, in this case, the school district, provide complete description, including all land in terms of acres, down to the fractions of acres. He hasn't done that, they haven't done that, because they have not taken into consideration what land they really own. Now, the reason that they haven't done it is because they relied on the easy way out, namely, the twelve hundred and one's feet from the, from the line. They didn't look at their survey and say, "Oh, yes, this adjoining landowner has had possession of a strip of twenty-three feet for years and years, and we ought to do a description that takes account for that." We have, as you have seen, filed a quiet title action against the school board, which is the owner of this property, and that will be heard in Butler County District Court, and determine who owns this strip of land. One of the things that's going to be, have to be into that is the survey of those trees that were planted there probably eighty years ago. I understand from the city that that survey has already been completed. If it has- has, we'll use it. If not, we'll have to get a new one. The problem with it is this, is if you go forward and do a zoning, you have violated three Kansas statutes. 715B, 754, and 758. 715B says that you are not authorized to adopt zoning regulations affecting all or designation of property located outside the city but within three miles thereof under the following conditions. One of those conditions is that it is not property that is already zoned by the county. We know what is. So until it's annexed, you can't rezone this, according to 715B. Likewise, 754 says, "The zoning regulations for a city shall define the zoning jurisdiction as including the area within the city limits, and may also include land located outside the city which is not currently subject to county zoning regulations within three miles of the city." Again, it's restating what we just heard. Until it's annexed, you cannot validly rezone this property. 758, "Regulations adopted by a city pursuant to 715B," the first one, "shall not apply to the use of land for agriculture so long as such land and buildings are used for those agricultural purposes." My land has been used for agriculture for probably 80 years. It still is. So again, if you rezone this, you know, you're relying on the fact that you're just making a recommendation, and the city's going to get to rezone it. But there's no sense in you making a recommendation if the city's going to do something that's illegal. That makes no sense. Now, if you were to go forward, I have one request. You're asking, actually two requests. This is being asked to be changed to R2. Why not change it to R1? They're going to put a school on this thing. That's a big, big building. R1 and R2, the only real difference between those is the size of lots. If they put, as I understand, that they're not looking at using more than 20 acres of this 49 acres. What's going to happen to that of the 49? Well, we don't know for sure, except that if they sell it to somebody, I suppose they're going to build houses on it. And those houses need to be nice houses, not tract homes. I would like, sometime, I suppose, my property's going to get developed. But if it gets developed, I'd like to have it be developed at a high-class program, not on an R2 program. So I'd suggest if we want to rezone it, do it in R1 instead of R2. The second thing, both in R1 and R2, the fifth permitted use is for public parks. In other words, you can build houses, you can build schools, and golf courses, and several things. And the last one is public parks. I think it's one thing to put a school on this property, it's another thing to open it up for a public park. Public park isn't the schoolyard playground. It's a park that's open to the public 24 hours a day, I suppose. Andover has lots of public parks. It has two great ones, and they've worked very hard to put them together. I don't think we need another one a little ways away. I'm told, and from the way I construe it, this can be done as a matter of course at this hearing, that you produce an overlay under Section 119 to simply delete the permitted use of number five.
Number five is a park.
Public parks, yeah. While it may be a little outside of what we're doing here, I think it is relevant. I've been informed, and I stand to be corrected if I am wrong, that this school is going to be a feeder school for Andover Central. Now, Andover Central students all have to come from south of Central. So what are we doing, building a school a mile north of the closest place that one of the students can go to, particularly an elementary school? Now, while this is completely up to the school district to decide, you, as a planning board, I think have a duty and responsibility to determine in your community whether you're using property in a manner which is right and appropriate. And this is not an appropriate place to put a school that's going to take care of kids a mile away. And of course, one of the things it does is provide a whole bunch more traffic in terms of both buses and in terms of cars, bringing kids up to that school from south of Andover. Now, my information may be incorrect on that, I don't know, but I think it is correct, from what I understand. The school people are here, if they want to correct it, they can. But if in fact it is true that that is a school feeding Andover Central, they're putting it in the wrong place. And I think you, as a planning commission, need to plan. You need to take the duty and responsibility to put things in the correct place. This isn't the correct place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker?
I guess I just want to go over with Les the process here, because you could come back up, sir, if, maybe we can reach agreement on this, maybe we can't. But essentially, we're running zoning and annexation concurrently. So when he's suggesting that we can't zone something we haven't annexed, the zoning won't officially incur until the annexation is complete, correct?
That's correct. There is case law out there, that so long as that ordinance for annexation is approved prior to the zoning case being heard by the governing body, that the city has jurisdiction.
Do you accept that?
If that's the way it goes. All I'm saying is, you're getting the burrow in front of the cart, or I should say, the cart in front of the burrow. As you'll notice by our agenda, the annexation was first, and that's the way it will also occur at the governing body, to make sure that the city has jurisdiction to make the zoning change. One of the problems with that is that no one was entitled to have notice of the annexation. I didn't get it, nobody else got it.
But indeed, you are here tonight, and you got notice for the zoning hearing.
Yes, I understand that. I'm not disputing that. But I'm saying, that's the reason that the first time I knew the annexation was up was when I got a copy of the agenda on the website.
And Alex, I just want to be clear, your kid who lives on 13th Street in Prairie Creek will be going to Metal Arc, correct?
Yes, we live on 13th and Metal Arc.
They have one subdivision they allow, at least one subdivision, I know they allow that.
Well, as I say, I can stand to be corrected on that, but my information is, is that this school is a feeder school for Central, and most of the kids are going to be coming from south of Central.
Right. This will be a pretty large subdivision that'll be feeding this school, though.
And I might add, this is not the body that decides where a school district boundaries are and all that matter. I mean, that's a completely different body. We have no jurisdiction there.
I'm pointing it out, you don't have jurisdiction, but you have a duty to think about planning for your community.
Certainly. We agree. And Mr. Steve, yes?
I'd like to ask a question of the applicant, out of curiosity. Was there something we could have been made clear to me of a non-attorney?
I'm Steve Anderson, city engineer. Would you clarify for the record specifically? Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I said applicant.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I told you I wasn't an attorney.
Okay, that's okay. I'll answer whatever I can.
So here's what I think is important to get in the minutes of this meeting that I don't understand. There is a case where you have overlapping legal descriptions, and two people have paper titles to the same strip of ground. There's another case where the title lines match on paper, but the possession, called an unwritten right of possession, overlaps from one to the other. And when you keep saying, "I own this," or "This is my land," and you're roping me in, can you present now or later any evidence of written title to that contested strip, or is it entirely an unwritten right of possession?
It's completely unwritten. It's statute of limitations, 6012.
I don't remember the number.
It says that no claim can be made to that real estate if it has been in open, exclusive, and permanent possession for at least 15 years. And in this case, it's been in that possession since 1968. So that property is subject to being declared to be ours. And I agree with everybody that said here, that has to be done. That's why we went ahead and filed the lawsuit today. That will have to be adjudicated in Butler County, and we'll go, that's almost a vanilla adverse possession case.
I don't disagree with you a bit. And so just to clarify further, when you state that this is a statute of limitations, the adjoininger, whomever that might be up the chain of title, would have had the right to file a suit against you for ejection from their title until that time period of 15 years passes. Is that, do we have a common understanding there?
Until the 15 years, but that 15 years started in 1968.
20 years, 50 years, doesn't matter what. They had a limited time to eject you
Right.
and clear that title of unwritten rights. And so what, for the minutes, for this group, what you're doing is you want to go to a piece of land that you don't have title to, but you want to claim under adverse possession that they failed to eject you from that land, and therefore the court should award you the title to that land. That's the essence of your claim.
No, the essence of my claim is that they claim to own a piece of property, and they have no right to make that claim by virtually the statute of limitations.
Okay, so.
A little bit different.
So do you see the difference, though, that one party has a piece of paper, which I understand goes back to the statute of frauds, that they have title on paper? And the only way you can gain that title is to go to court. It doesn't automatically transfer. And that's the distinction.
I have to go to the courthouse, which I've done, and file a quiet title action, and that will be heard in Butler County District Court.
I just wanted that entered into the record, so that this and our attorney in the future and the governing body will know that these people have filed based on their title of record, and you don't have a piece of paper to counter that with an overlap. Your recourse is through court, like you're rightfully, I think, choosing to proceed. That's the distinction I would like to make.
That's a little bit of a distinction, but in this case, it goes a little bit different, because they did a survey before they closed on the property and set a stake that was 23 feet on east of their 1,201 feet. That put them on notice that they were subject to adverse possession. At that point.
I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just, I'm making the distinction between written title under the statute of frauds in this country and rights of possession which are unwritten. That's the only distinction I would like to make.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's an ongoing thing forever and ever.
I think you have the stuff from the city attorney, and I certainly don't want to counter that. The only thing is, I see this cutting both ways, that if this can be amended or voted on subject to the city attorney, and we're using this process tonight to interrupt that process, I personally would be very concerned about that, and I'd follow your attorney's advice. That's all I'd say. Thank you very much for your answer, sir.
One of the things that we suggested to the school district is to agree to go ahead and zone this, subject to the survey that shows where this hedge line is. And they didn't do it. They wouldn't do it. All they said is, "We will do that, subject to you agreeing with us where the hedge line is." Well, that's simply an agreement to agree. I've never let my clients enter into those things, and I'm not going to do it either. If they want to say, okay, we're going to rezone this, subject to the proper survey, where those hedge trees are as being the property line, I think we ought to go ahead and can go ahead. And that's a good, clean way of doing this. But they wouldn't agree to it, so I don't know what you can do.
All right, if there's no other questions of the applicant or the speaker? Thank you. And rebuttal?
And rebuttal. So Phil Meyer, Baughman Company. I think Tim Cannell would like a minute too, so I'll try to be quick, so we can both
Thank you.
not take too much of your time. Answer a couple of questions that brought up. Why R2 over R1? I selected R2, met with staff, talked to them about it. You look at that site, and to me, when I look at that, that's an urban development in the future. R2 is a standard zoning in the city of Andover for residential. R1 allows a 20,000 square foot lot. R2 allows a 10,000 square foot lot. That's 85 by 1, 25 at minimum size, although you can go up from there. That's still a large lot for an urban development. So most of the annexations, when we go to residential in the city of Andover, we file R2, I didn't even think twice about it, because that R1, to me, is more of a suburban development. And you look 10, 15, 20 years down the road, which is what planning commission's role is, that's going to be an urban development, as it is on the north side of 13th someday. Public parks, I see absolutely no problem with a public park next to a school. Those two play well together. And I see no reason to exclude public parks, but that will be planning commission's decision, I guess. And for Central High Feeder School, that's really not a zoning issue. I mean, tonight, we're talking land use. And is this land use of R2 appropriate or not appropriate in the city of Andover, not the specifics of the school? That's a school board issue. So, Tim?
Hi, Brett White, superintendent in the Andover School District. Yeah, just, I think, getting us back to the importance of facts, and Mr. Schwartz is misinformed as far as the boundaries. I would refer him to the district website. It's Central's not the exact boundary for the north-south. So that is on the district website. You may want to take a look at that. So as mentioned, Prairie Creek would feed into Metal Arc, Shady Brook, the Portofino Apartments, and those types of things. So, you know, I do think as we, the credibility and the facts are really important, so I did want to just state that for the record. Thanks.
Thank you.
Tim Cannell, one more time. Not to belabor the obvious, we have two parties who have a deed, and those deeds match up. And Mr. Schwartz wants to claim more than what his deed provides. That's a claim. That's not resolved. That's not why we're here tonight. So we'd ask you to move ahead. Let's move the process forward. We'll get this resolved. But we'd like for you to recommend it favorably to the city commission, so that we can proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's no other questions of staff or the applicant, I'll go ahead and close this public hearing. Certainly, we can ask staff some more questions. But if you guys have any questions that you'd like to ask staff now, or we can proceed into the factors and findings. Okay, let's proceed. Gary, would you like to?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that for you.
You do a good job.
Just don't do it as well as Bill does. Factors and findings. Number one, what are the existing uses and their character and condition on the subject property and in the surrounding neighborhood? See adjacent existing land uses on page one and four, one of four.
We acknowledge those.
Okay. Number two, what is the current zoning of the subject property and that of the surrounding neighborhood in relationship to the requested change?
Yes, yes, we can acknowledge those.
Posted also. K1, R2, AG 40, and SF 20.
We are educated.
Okay. Number three, is the length of time that the subject property has remained undeveloped or vacant as zoned a factor in the consideration? Staff says no.
I agree.
I agree.
Number four, would the request correct an error in the application of these regulations? Staff has said no.
I agree.
I agree.
Number five, is the request caused by change or changing conditions in the area of the subject property? And if so, what is the nature and significance of such change or changing? And if so, what is the nature and significance of such change or changing conditions? Staff says no.
I might say yes, because we got a change in conditions. We anticipated a school there, so, yeah, we need, we need to look at... I mean, technically, we don't need R2, but we do have changing conditions from AG one to, to this, so...
Okay. Well, growth of the city?
Growth of the city.
The need for additional schools?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, number six. Do adequate sewage disposal and water supply and all of the necessary public facilities, including street access, exist? Or can they be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the subject property? Staff says yes. Public sewer and water can be extended to the site, and adequate public streets are in place.
Yep.
Agreed.
Number seven, would the subject property need to be platted or replatted in lieu of dedications made for right-ofways, easements, access control, or building setback lines? Staff has said yes.
Agreed.
Number eight, would a screening plan be necessary for existing or potential uses of the subject property? Staff has said yes. Site plan review will be required for the proposed elementary school site. Number nine, are suitable vacant lands or buildings available or not available for development that currently have the same zoning as is requested? Staff has said not applicable.
Agreed.
Number ten, if the request is for business or industrial uses, are such uses needed to provide more services or employment opportunities? Staff has said not applicable.
Agreed.
Yep.
Number eleven, is the subject property suitable for the current zoning to which it has been restricted? Staff has said yes.
Agreed.
Twelve, to what extent would removal of the restrictions, such as the approval of the zoning request, detrimentally affect other property in the neighborhood? Staff has said increased activ- activity and traffic. Would agree.
Agreed.
Number thirteen, would the request be consistent with the purpose of the zoning district classification and the intent and purpose of these regulations? Staff has said yes.
Agreed.
Back on twelve, as this area develops anyway, it's going to increase traffic, so it has nothing, really nothing to do with the school. It's just that as people move out there and develop, it's going to get more people.
Yes, it is.
Significant monies have been made to improve roads and the traffic for that area.
Yep. Two-lane gravel road versus a four-lane, yeah.
Number fourteen, is the request in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and does it further enhance the implement, implementation of the plan? Staff has said yes. The comprehensive plan suggests the utilization on infill development. Number fifteen, what is the nature of the support or opposition to the request?
As heard.
As, as heard. The park restriction.
Yep. Sixteen, are there any informational materials or recommendations available from knowledgeable persons or experts which would be helpful in this evaluation? Staff has said yes. Approval conditions on annexation and plating.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Number seventeen, by comparison, does the relative gain to the public health, safety, and general welfare outweigh the loss in property value or the hardship imposed upon the applicant by not approving the request?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
I think it's a positive in both ways. That's not what you wanted to hear, okay.
Yes, it outweighs. I believe it does.
It's N-A.
This is that summarizing question where, where you weigh all of those factors that lead up to it. Do you believe there, there is some loss in public health, safety, and general welfare?
By approving this?
Yes. If there is, does it outweigh the applicant's ability to use this property?
See, I don't consider it a loss of public safety and general welfare.
I think, I think we're approving a R2 development, whether it's a school versus right, single-family residential. I don't see there's a hardship imposed. But I, you know.
Yeah, I agree.
Agreed.
Yeah, that's, that's always been a tough question. For how many years?
Who wrote that?
Right, and, and in our UDM that's up next, we have reworded all seventeen of these to make them much more intuitive and-
We reworded seventeen a few years ago, anyway. That's better now than it was fifteen years ago.
Okay, I've, I've picked a few that I think are supportive of this, and I'll just share those with you. You guys can either go along with them or, or whatever. I've got item five, I think that supports this change in zoning request. I've got item seven regarding the plating that supports this request. Number fourteen supports this request. And I, I think number seventeen, you know, also supports this request. So, so I got five, seven, fourteen, and seventeen. And? Any, any comments? And I'll go ahead and read a statement from the city attorney at this time. It might, might shape your motion, should you make a motion here soon. As the property, as the commission city received notice of unrecorded chain or claim of ownership interest in the portion of, of the property that is subject of this zone change by persons other than the applicant, the commission has proceeded on this basis of record of title ownership of the subject property. The change in, zone changes accordingly approved subject to the following additional conditions. The extent such zone change shall affect the portion of the subject property upon which ownership has been disputed before the commission, the change with respect to such portion shall nonetheless take effect unless and until ownership contrary to the public record is established by final order of the Court of Competent Jurisdiction or by two, by final agreement of disputing parties by deed. Everybody? Makes sense to everybody?
Yep.
Okay, very good. So, I think we can just enter that into our motion as written. That would be good.
I'm ready to second it again.
Looking for a motion. I'm sorry, we've closed the public hearing. We've, we've closed the public hearing.
The park.
Go ahead.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that having considered the evidence at the hearing and the factors based on number five, seven, fourteen, and seventeen, and also from the letter of record from the city attorney, that we recommend to the governing body that case number Z dash two zero one eight dash zero three be approved to change the zoning district classification from present Butler County AG forty to R2 single-family residential district based on the findings of the planning commission as recorded in the summary of this hearing.
I'll second it.
Do we need to include the plating?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, and if you would, read that condition written by the city attorney-
Okay.
Into your motion.
Okay, I will read that. This is from the city attorney. As the commission city received notice of an unrec- recorded claim of an ownership interest in a portion of the property that is the subject of this zoning change by persons other than the applicant, the commission has proceeded on the basis of the record title ownership of the subject property. The zoning change is accordingly approved subject to the following additional conditions. Five, to the extent such zoning change shall affect the portion of the subject property upon which ownership has been disputed before the commission, the change will respect, with respect to such portion shall nevertheless take effect unless and until ownership contrary to the public record is established, one, by final order of a Court of Competent Juris- jurisdiction, or two, by final agreement of the disputed parties by deed. Also, that plating, that all or, all, that all or a portion of such property to be platted or replatted and recorded within one year from the date of the governing body approval or the case be considered disapproved and closed, and that the ordinance effectuating the zone change be published by city clerk until the final plat has been recorded with the register of deeds during the period stated above.
Now, I can second it.
We have a motion by Gary and a second by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
I will bring out one thing we found down on our property. We were, those homes that I live in were all built under the county and annexed into the city. When my neighbor measured over towards me for the property line, and I measured from my house over towards him for the property line, there was about a foot and a half difference.
Some, about a foot and a half of no man's land.
Yeah, disputes occur, for sure. Uh, disputes definitely do occur.
Yeah.
We, we'll have this go to city council, and I'll, I'll read a, a set of closing remarks that are similar to what I've already read. Uh, this, this case will go to the governing body with the planning commission's recommendation and a written summary of the hearing for consideration at its regular hearing on June twelfth, twenty eighteen, which begins at seven PM here in the council chambers, City Hall. Protest petitions against the change in zoning clas- classification, but not directed to the planning commission's recommendations as such, may be received by the city clerk for fourteen days after tonight, May twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen, at no later than four thirty PM. If there is a proper, properly signed and notarized protest petition with an accurate legal description for owners of record of twenty percent or more of any real property possessed, proposed to the rezone or owners of record of twenty percent or more of the real property within the official area of notification, both inside and outside the city, not counting public street rights away, then such change will not be passed except by a three-fourth vote of all members of the governing board, body. With that, I thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. Next item is item number eight. We're getting to it.
Yeah.
Getting there. Okay. Item number eight is a special use case. This case number is two thousand eighteen dash zero one. This is a public hearing on an application for a special use request to establish a family event center and riding arena in an A1 agricultural transition district on property located at sixteen fifty South, one fifty-ninth Street in Wichita, Kansas. The applicant desires to use the existing horse farm property for private family events and horse-riding arena, and staff knows no reason not to approve this application. And I just, for the clarification, is it truly Wichita, Kansas? I believe it's Andover, is that right? Or the mailing address is Wichita?
The mailing addresses on one fifty-ninth Street are Wichita.
Very, very well, okay. Something always a little bit confusing there. Okay, so we have a special use. It seems pretty straightforward to me. Certainly, if you guys have any questions of staff, now's the time to ask. And while you're thinking of questions, I might go through a couple items here of, you know... Is there any reason why you should disqualify yourself for this item?
Nope.
Okay. And have you received any ex parte communication?
Nope.
On this case? Okay, me neither. Uh, again, the notification on this was done in the Butler County Times-Gazette on April twenty-first, twenty eighteen, and all notices were mailed to the applicant of six real properties of record in the area of notification on April eighteenth, twenty eighteen. And so twenty days has elapsed since then, and I'll declare proper notification has been given, unless anybody here says the contrary. Okay, seen none. Les, can you shed a little background on this item?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory. It is an existing horse farm, has been for many, many years. It's bounded on the, the east, south, and partially on the west by floodplain, which somewhat restricts development of the property in the future. The, the applicant has purchased the property a few months ago and made a lot of great improvements out there, but he would like to add a riding academy, which is, a riding arena, which is specifically requires a special use in the A1 agricultural district.
All right. Any questions, staff? If not?
Les, do we know how big a, an arena, or does it really even matter?
I, I think the applicant can answer those more detailed questions, Gary.
Okay.
All right.
We'll get them up there and grill them.
Can, can I ask the applicant to come speak? And please state your name and address for the record.
Dawson Grimsley, six oh eight Flint Hills National Parkway, Andover, Kansas. It, the arena is going to be, is it hundred fifty or hundred twenty? One fifty by sixty. And it's strictly for my granddaughter, who rides saddlebreds and Morgans, to practice on because you can't practice in the wintertime, and she has to practice six days a week. It'll be behind the barn, too, towards Tree Row.
All right.
Excellent. Is it going to be lighted?
Inside. Not outside, but inside.
Okay.
And would the family event center be part of that arena, or is that something separate from-
No, it's, it's separate. It's to the, it's to the east. Let me get my bearings correct. It's to the east of the utility barn, where I keep my tractor and my gator and stuff. And it, it'll be right there on the property. And it's strictly for Christmas and Thanksgiving. There'll be a pool in the back for just us to use. I've had a lot of people in the neighborhood ask me about it. "Are you gonna, are you gonna rent that out?" I said, "Absolutely not." I, I'm not going to rent it out. Uh, my daughter, that's going to be like the caretaker, is very, uh... She goes to bed at nine o'clock at night. She works all day long, and she told her sister, "Don't you come over here past nine o'clock at night." And it's strictly going to be for the family.
And for this council, right?
Yeah, you, the council can use it.
Yeah, we probably should omit that last comment. All right.
Any other questions?
No.
All right.
I was gonna say, if you recommend it, or you pass it, come out when it gets done and look at it, 'cause it's, it's getting there. He, like he said, we've made some great improvements, it's beautiful.
Yep.
And it wasn't when I bought it.
That would be nice to have an invitation to come out and see it.
Hey, come on out.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know that there's anybody here to speak against it or for it beyond yourself, so, uh, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing unless there is someone. All right, we'll go and close. Okay, I think everybody here is for supporting it. All righty. So, we do have some findings and factors. And, uh, Lynn, or anybody else?
I'll be happy to read them.
All right, Gary's a trooper tonight.
He does good.
Thank you.
Factors and findings. Number one, what are the existing uses and their character and conditions on the subject property and in the surrounding neighborhood? See adjacent existing land use on page one of four.
Yep.
I'm looking at it right now.
Looks informed.
Okay. Number two, what is the current zoning of the subject property and that of the surrounding neighborhood in relationship to the requested change?
Yep. Yes.
Okay. Number three, is the length of time that the subject property has remained undeveloped or vacant as factored, as zoned a factor in the consideration? Staff says not applicable.
Nope.
Number four, would the request correct an error in the application of these regulations?
Nope.
Staff says no. Number five, is the request caused by change or changing conditions in the area of the subject property, and if so, what is the nature and significance of such change or changing conditions? Staff says no.
I agree.
Do adequate sewage disposal and water supply and all other necessary public facilities, including street access, exist, or can they be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the subject property? Staff says yes, public water and adequate public, inadequate public are available.
There's a type, whether that's public streets.
Public streets. There is no public sewer available in the area. The applicant proposes to use a private sewer disposal system.
Excellent.
Number seven, would the subject property need to be platted or replatted in lieu of dedications made for right of ways, easements, access control, or building setback lines? Staff says no, road dedications are already in place. Number eight, would a screening plan be necessary for existing and or potential uses of the subject property? Staff says no.
Nope.
Are suitable vacant lands or buildings available or not available for development that currently has the same zoning as is requested? Staff says not applicable. Number ten, if the request is for business or industrial use, are such uses needed to provide more services or employment opportunities? Staff says not applicable. Number eleven, is the subject property suitable for the current zoning to which it has been restricted? Staff says yes. To what extent would removal of the restrictions, such as the approval of the zoning request, detrimental, detrimentally affect other property in the neighborhood? Staff says there would be increased activity, but that would be limited to a family and family members. Number thirteen, would the request be consi- consistent with the purpose of the zoning district classification and the intent and purposes of these regulations? Staff says yes. Number fourteen, is the request in conformance with the comprehensive plan and does it further enhance the implementation of the plan? Staff says the plan recognizes agr- agricultural transitions at the urban area fringes.
Yes.
Agreed.
Agree.
Number fifteen, what is the nature of the support or opposition to the request? Staff says none at this time. And we didn't hear anybody here. Are there any informational materials or recommendations available from knowledgeable persons or experts which would be helpful in its evaluation? Staff says approval as applied for. Number seventeen, by comparison, does the relative gain to the public health, safety, and general welfare outweigh the loss in property value, or the hardship imposed upon the applicant by not approving the request?
No.
No. I think we covered that.
Yeah.
Me and A.
He's, he's been in here the longest, Les, so. We follow the leader. All right, um, I did mark a few items down. If you guys wanna consider these, uh, eleven, uh, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, I think those are, uh, well support this change, uh, for the special use. Uh, so, if you would like me to go over those.
Look the young man down at the end, make the motion.
There you go.
This young man or me? Younger than you, Lynn.
Well, yeah, y'all are, let me tell ya.
Not by much.
Eleven, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, I think all supports the case, so. Just to reiterate there.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, having considered the evidence at the hearing and the factors to evaluate the special use application based on numbers eleven, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, I, Gary Israel, move that we recommend to the governing body that case number SU dash two zero one eight dash zero one be approved for the establishment of family event center and riding arena in the A one agricultural transition district based on the findings of the planning commission as recorded in the summary of this hearing.
Okay.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Excellent.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All righty. Uh, we do have some closing remarks again. Uh, this case will be forwarded to the governing body, uh, with the planning commission's recommendations as, and a written summary of the hearing for consideration at the regular meeting on June twelfth, twenty eighteen, which begins at seven PM here in, uh, the city hall, city council, uh, meeting room. The protest petitions against the change in zone, or in this case, special use, uh, but not directed at the planning commission recommendations as such may be received by the city clerk for fourteen, fourteen days after tonight, May twenty ninth, twenty eighteen, at four thirty. If there's a, if there are property, properly signed, notarized petitions, uh, with accurate, uh, legal descriptions of owners of record of twenty percent or more of the total area of property within the official area of notification, uh, both inside and outside the city, not counting the public street rights away, then such change shall not be passed except by a three-fourth majority vote by the governing body. So, I just wanna thank you guys for coming out, and, uh, let's see, uh, look forward to seeing some riding going on out there.
Your granddaughter's a very lucky woman.
All right, we are not done.
I know.
So, sit back down. We do have, uh, item nine to go through, uh, and I see the Fosters are here, so we can get that item rolling.
I'm gonna run and get a drink of water, keep on.
Yeah, okay. It is getting a bit late, but we'll see if we can get through this. These are... So, item number nine is, uh, Foster Design Associates' update to the Unified Development Manual, as they're getting plugged in, uh, and Lynn, get some water.
Where is Bill tonight? Does anybody know? Graduation?
You know, Les, years ago, what, fifteen, we used to have meetings last until, uh, ten, ten thirty?
I need a translation.
One forty-five was the record.
No kidding?
Yes.
Well, uh, most of them, we, well, a couple of them, we stopped and came back the next night or a couple nights later.
Really?
Yeah, it was a... It was a busy, busy city back then.
Was that, like, post tornado, when everything was happening?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, Les, I remember when we annexed Ruth that area in. Phew. That was a fight. No.
What year was that? I'm trying to remember, I remember it, but I don't remember what year. Oh, yeah. Don't even talk, don't even go there.
Yeah, it was mid nineties.
I thought he said he would live there and moved in ninety-five.
Mm-hmm. When you annexed me into the city, that was around that time, too. Yes.
Yeah, to straighten everything out. And then how many acres is Flint Hills, and they asked to be annexed? Yeah. So you can do more than, what, twenty-five acres or whatever? Oh, I know. So, it could be any size that you want, if it's... Yeah.
Section of, a section of land like that.
All right. I presume we're being recorded right now. Okay, very well, I just wanted to remind everybody that.
Yeah.
Clarification on how many acres the city can annex at one time? Twenty-one acres?
Unilateral.
Unilateral.
Good information.
There's a lot of things to remember.
On the board at that time, we were two, two guys outside the city limits, and they annexed us. We lived neighbors to each other, so they didn't have anybody outside the city limits on the planning board anymore. Yeah.
Huh?
Oh. I was vice, yeah. I was, I was able to stay as the vice for most of the time. That was a lot more comfortable, I could talk. Was it, you got the air conditioner on in this place, or is it?
I don't feel like it.
I don't either.
It's a, it's a little warm to start off with, that's for sure.
Where's that thermostat?
I apologize. If anything's wafting.
Where's that city engineer to turn up the heat here, I tell you? Or to turn up the air conditioning, that's what we need, that gum. Yeah, I've talked too much.
And today wasn't even that hot.
Huh?
I said today wasn't even that hot.
Yeah, oh, boy, the weekend.
All right, you're in the hot seat now. Are we ready?
Yes, sir, we are ready.
All righty. Yes.
All these hot bodies in here, that's...
It's not bad. All right.
Do we have a green light?
Green light.
Doesn't get any greener.
Okay. Let's go for it.
More ready.
Just in this first slide we're showing you, what I wanna mention is that when we went to a workshop session, um, if you'll recall, last time we met, we went over a couple major items of the U, Unified Development Manual, and when we had the workshop with the city council, um, as we were kinda finishing up, a general question came up, um, such that, well, how has the zoning changed, or what have you had to do to make, bring it up to speed, you know, after all these years and things? So, the idea was, um, we've put together a few slides for you that are really gonna cut to the chase for you to show you what we've had to do and work with the zoning to get it up to speed, get it up to date. So, having said that, thanks to that question coming up at the, uh, council workshop level, we're gonna present these slides to you to help summarize the zoning update. You've seen these five parts before, but what I'd point out to you is part two and part three. Uh, last time we looked, uh, site plan review, we looked at the subdivision regulations. Now you're looking at the zoning regulations that, this evening, that's the heart of it. That's the big piece of this, which makes all this happen, so, that's what we're gonna look at this evening, are the zoning regulations. And in terms of, you know, we've talked before about where we're at on other information, is that the next time we bring all this back to you, you're gonna see all of it. You'll see it all brought together, finished information, and I'm sure that will be a, uh, pretty lengthy meeting, I would suspect. Uh, very simple goals relative to the manual, uh, looking to consolidate all the information, um, and, and past information, greatly simplify things as best we can, and then, uh, required updates based upon changes in statutes and, and changes in laws. For example, in our consolidation, we started with sixteen ordinances dating back into the seventies that needed to be brought forward, and so those have all been brought into the single development ordinance. Okay, not the manual, but the ordinance. The simplification, one of the big parts of that is, is, uh, the plain English issue. You've heard us say this before, Les's mother, eighty-four years old, she needs to understand this thing. So, um, if you look at filing of protest on the left-hand side, that's one sentence. That's what is in your regulations today. Well, I really need to give, uh, Deborah credit here in that she is very good at this plain English effort. And, you know, how do you go about that? Well, you're trying to be very clear and concise, well, what do you do? You parse down each phrase of, of a, of a, part of the document, and then you break it down and, and ask yourself, what does it really mean? And so you establish a hierarchy as you're doing that, and then look for, um, simple language and things to be very direct in making it a plain English version. This has taken many, many hours, as you might guess, to get to that plain English effort. What else to simplify and, and make this work? Uh, we're looking to make it very user-friendly. Uh, two of those items are developing tables and illustrations. Now, illustrations are pretty straightforward. You're just trying to take something that might be a little bit complex in text and clarify it. So it's to make that, again, more friendly and easier to understand. The tables have been a very interesting effort. When you take a lot of information and you, you take all of that text and you put it into table, the big benefit that we've had is we're finding the discrepancies. Where does something not match up in the terminology and work in, in all these different places? So, a table is taking information from all throughout the document to have it make sense. And the one that, um, I think you'll really appreciate are, are the, the land use tables, where we take all the land use, um, table information, uh, link it up with definitions and things. So the tables have been very important. Down there at the bottom on the left-hand side, it's all gonna be web-based, so it's very easy to access and very easy to link together. The whole document will be searchable, so if you wanna look for a certain word or something, you just type it in, and it will take you right to however many spots there are to find where that is. Another big thing is the use of bookmarks and website links. Deborah could even hazard a guess as to how many bookmarks there are in this thing. It, it's hundreds, if not thousands on it, so, and these are all highlighted. So you'll see just by the graphics of it, what can be clicked on, it'll take you right to that information on it. Uh, on the right-hand side there, you, you see a, a simple illustration, that one's just for, um, notification area. Um, updating the zones. This involved a lot of discussion on it, and, you know, uh, none of the boundaries that are there today will change. Second item is, we've looked at the names of... Second item is we've looked at the names of designations and some of those have changed actually to make it easier to understand on it. And we'll look at a table here to help you understand that a little bit better on it. There were three zones that eliminated. Two of them are never used. The floodplain district, it's better not to have that within the zoning as a district. It's better to have that as a management regulation. That will be in that linkable part where you can go right to it on it. Only two zones have been added overall. The arterial transition overlay there at the bottom, that was a recommendation from the comprehensive plan as well as the one above that, the introduction of mixed-use zones. And we'll look at that a little bit more. To give you a comparison of what the current zoning districts are, those are on the left-hand side. And you go over to the right-hand side and those are the proposed districts. You'll see some subtle changes in the names, frankly, to help clarify things. For example, the single-family residential, low density versus medium density on it. The two that are eliminated, again, not used, the R six and the MH two. I think the one to point out there, if you look at the B five, that syncs up well with your corridor study for Highway fifty-four. And we've got another slide on that we'll show you. You see any questions on this particular slide? You know, again, for clarification of the document, we studied carefully. What's the intent of each of these zones? And so we tried to get that down as, as well-defined as we could. And you can see some of that information there, especially spelling out the purpose of these mixed-use districts. And that last one there was for ag and residential. These are for the business and the industrial zones, the intent of those. Looking a little bit more deeply at the mixed-use neighborhood transition zoning district, you see the word walkable, compact, vibrant. Again, you can see the list there of how you look at the intent, mixed-use pedestrian environment, public open spaces. You know, that's going to involve some discussions with the city. That's going to involve looking at your Parkmaster Plan to see where those spaces might be appropriate. So documents are consistent on it, making streets more active places to be on it. The arterial transition overlay district, that will trump any other zoning district below it. And the intent is to allow for residential uses along these arterials. And you can see it there, it's for Anover Road and Central on it, is to allow some of those residential uses to become business uses. Now, also in this district, not only can it be, when you might have a case on it, it could be more restrictive, but it can also be less restrictive. So you might look at some of those decreased minimum setbacks, but you might increase the maximum lot coverage. You could put restrictions on access. So it gives you kind of a tool that you can use to make these residential conversions possible. This gives you a good look at the B five, the highway corridor zone. That diagram there or that illustration there is direct from the corridor study there. But you can graphically see that it's talking about higher densities, higher story developments, careful use of frontage roads, for example, or baggage roads. As I mentioned earlier, the zoning district boundaries won't change. Mainly the change in the, the planning or the zoning map is going to be to update the districts. And then that'll open up, you'll see the two new ones there. But that'll be mainly an update of the legend, not necessarily the map itself. Again, I mentioned coordinating with new plans. There's this whole thing of what needed to be updated. Well, it needed to be updated to coordinate with all the new plans that you've got. It needed to be updated to meet the new statutory and legal requirements. That Reed versus Gilbert we talked about changed every sign code in the nation. But there's a lot of things that are new, that you all have talked about some, such as food trucks, accessory dwellings, even tiny houses. So anyway, we'll look a little bit more at that here in just a second. Again, mentioned updating the sign regulations. The original Article seven is completely redone and it's an Article eight now. The outcome of the court case, you can't, you're supposed to stay away from anything on the sign that relates to content of what type of sign it is. So this whole new article that you received is based upon time, place, and manner of signage. It's as simple as that. And in that particular article, we've got quite a few illustrations to, so you can see exactly what that's relating to definition-wise and the meaning of it. Food trucks. Very carefully talked through where those are appropriate to be. For example, not prohibited from vending in residential zoning districts unless they get a permit. They might have a community event or something and, you know, Les' background is very helpful. He's, you know, had to face some of these things and some of these questions. So we're able to take that information and work that into updating you with current information about how do you handle food trucks. Accessory dwelling units. Those are becoming more and more popular on it, you know, whether it's for, you know, grandma or whoever it might be. It might be a college student, it might be an adult who's, you know, returned back home. But accessory dwellings are a reality and they're becoming more popular. But we had to look at things like, what's the lot area that's appropriate for it? There, there needs to be a principal structure for this to relate to. Someone has to be, have property that's owner-occupied on it. Tiny houses. I'm sure you've seen things in the newspaper or just general information. I think this deals with them very straightforward in the sense that, you know, what is the size of a tiny house? Well, here, they would be allowed as an accessory dwelling unit, but it's going to be on a foundation. Whereas if it's going to be a tiny house on wheels, it's going to be considered to be either a house trailer, recreational vehicle, and it will be regulated like that. Wireless communications, you can see the statute there. Basically, you know, allows for a lot of wireless facilities to go into right-ofways without any further discussion on it. And you can see on the left-hand side, you know, does it go on a power pole? Does it go on a light pole or is it an independent standalone facility? Well, you know, those are going to be allowed in the public right-ofway. Let's see. Les, am I interpreting that correctly, that in the A one, it's going to be just permitted use, right? Okay. Five years ago, we wouldn't have talked about electric vehicle charging stations. But, you know, electric vehicles are out there today. So let's get it in the regulations, let's be prepared to talk about it. And you can see the research relative to the different types of them, whether it's going to be a private or a public facility. And even, you know, are these going to be stations where you're going to literally exchange batteries as opposed to just simply charging them on it? Again, that's brought into the regulations for you. Wind energy conversion systems. The criteria there, and, and I do want to point out to you, initially, the, they were permitted in zoning districts only as a special use. And the thought with, with this update of the regulations is consider them a special use whenever they exceed the maximum height of the zoning district. Now that's a question for you. Again, the original would, would allow them as a special use no matter what, regardless of height on it. You see the distinction there? So we had a fair amount of discussion to come to that conclusion. But, you know, again, we want your input if you feel differently about that. What are some of the other things that needed to be updated? For example, we took a very careful look at queuing lanes in and around businesses and schools for, for drive-throughs on it. Short-term rentals, that's a whole new ballgame with Airbnbs and the different types of rentals out there. Outdoor patio seating. Now, one thing I should point out to you is we're very carefully protecting right-ofway. You know, we're not saying you can go out into the right-ofway even with signage on it. There's a distinct division there on it. Self-serve storage facilities, the pods or the portable storage containers. Those as, you can see down in there in definitions that need to be updated, container buildings. For those of you who have driven past Central there, as you go west of Hillside, you see a whole bunch of these being put together. That's what we're talking about here, the container buildings. That's an adaptive reuse of those structures on it. And these are just a few of some of the new definitions that had to be put into the definitions to update on it. Planned unit developments. This is one section that we're still scratching our heads on. And we will bring that, we're going to get that to you in advance of when we send you the other information. You know, why has this been a challenge? The current regulations have eleven pages of the cookbook of how you put together a planned unit development. This dates back to the very original statutes when that was done, okay? Today, that regulation is now in the updated statutes, one sentence. It says that governing bodies can make provisions and adopt zoning regulations which make provisions for planned unit development. Well, how do you go from eleven pages of instruction to one sentence? So what we're looking at in, in the update is, number one, looking out for protecting the city on something that's done with the PED, but also making it flexible for developers when they want to work on something and come up with something unique on it. You see any questions there related to the PED? But we're, we've gone through several drafts on that, but we're not quite there. We're still trying, we got it down to four pages, but we're trying to get it even less than four pages on it. Okay, we do have the full set of zoning regulations with us. And we're prepared to answer any questions you've got or get into some of that. But I hope this overview has helped you to see how this update of the zoning regulations was crafted. Having said that, we're prepared for any questions you might have.
David, how long do you see that this new document would exist for? Ten, twenty, thirty years? Because we're seeing all these changes in like food trucks and, you know, rental properties and tiny houses and, you know, it's autonomous cars and charging stations and...
Well, I think the beauty of it is the way that we've set this up in that being a Unified Development Manual, you can go into each segment of this and make a change by ordinance or resolution, but the document still stands.
Okay, good.
So that was one of the criterias of how this was set up was being it very easy to update and change on it. Remind me, I do have one question for you all when you're done with your questions.
Gary, back in nineteen ninety-three, when our regulations were adopted, video rental stores weren't considered because there wasn't such a thing. They've come and gone since then.
Yeah.
And things are evolving much faster even than that now. So the regulations have to be flexible. Some things, like David said, will be able to be adjusted by a simple ordinance, building codes, floodplains, stormwater regulations. But the zoning regulations will still have to go through this process where they're presented to the planning commission and the planning commission reviews and makes a recommendation to the governing body to amend the zoning regulations. No way to get around that.
Along, along those same lines, I think when we did a workshop long ago, we talked about the opportunity for administrative adjustment process. And I know, since you said that, I mean, it kind of begs the question, do, do we want or desire to have any kind of administrative adjustment process as a part of our new regulations? Something that is official and not just kind of, yeah, that's approved and no, that's not approved or here, we can tweak it ever so slightly, so please.
That, that was going to be my question.
Okay, very well.
I'm serious. After all our discussion, that was one question that stood out because we really need your feedback on that.
Yeah.
Basically, just to talk a little bit in detail about it, you might think like in, in the site plan review, that allows for the zoning administrator to make a determination on the intensity of a project. You know, that's kind of an administrative thing, you know, making that kind of decision. But what we're talking about goes a little bit deeper than that. For example, let's say someone came in and they were five percent off on the parking, you know, in terms of what, what the regulations say they had to have. Are you comfortable allowing the zoning administrator to make a determination or an administrative adjustment to say, "We're going to give him a ten percent tolerance that instead of X number of spaces, it can be X percent less" and still be, meet the intent of the regulations? So it's those kind of things that we'd be looking to you, where are you comfortable allowing the zoning administrator to make those kind of judgments? And we could come back, you know, more a definitive list of that to kind of help out what might be considered an administrative adjustment. Les, would you have any more to add to that?
Most of the regulations that I've read and through this process, I must have been through twenty or thirty different sets of regulations, are somewhere between five and ten percent allowances for administrative adjustments, whether that be lot size or setbacks or maximum lot coverage or, like David said, parking.
Sign height.
Right.
Square footage.
Building height, yeah.
I think that makes sense from a site standpoint. It's site-specific, obviously, because we aren't going to just blankly say it's administrative adjustment. So it's a specific question that may not, I would hope that staff, whoever it may be, whether it's Les or whoever, might, if there's been some objection in the past on certain items, then certainly he'd probably, or she might bring it back to us for consent, which... I did have one thing I was noticing as I went through. I really like what, what you've done and I think it's great. It's kind of an understatement there. But I was wondering on, on Article five, where we have all the different uses and kind of helps to articulate what those uses are doing. I think maybe having a category in front of the use, whether it be to help, to help the reader kind of sort through them quicker, maybe. It would be like maybe civic uses up front versus, you know, retail-type uses or, you know, some sort of classifier, if you will, that might help as you go through there. And maybe you already thought through that and that didn't work or what?
No, it's just that the table kept growing. It was originally only a few pages long and... It was originally only a few pages long and alphabetically it worked, but we kept adding more things, the home occupations and accessory uses. And now each table is eight or nine pages long. And you're right, they probably do need to be organized into subsets somehow.
Yeah, I think, I think that, you know, from, for me as a user, I think it'd be nice to, as I'm looking through what's allowed, maybe if, maybe I'm concerned about retail uses or whatever, I can jump to those retail uses and skip reading those that are maybe not geared towards that type of use.
Would those be, I mean, you can see here how it's done alphabetically. I mean, that's the intent of it. That was kind of, that's been used a lot in regulations for people to go find stuff. Do you think it needs a category such as we come up with retail or whatever it might be and then do it alphabetically under that?
Well, I guess I was thinking just by, by more of the type of uses, is whether it's a civic use, using that to sort it, you know. But I guess I'm not totally opposed to the way it's, the way it's lined out with being alphabetical, but...
That, was that Lenexa regulations that we were looking at categorize things, but they also have over 500 different uses listed.
Yeah.
Better different categories.
It's a good question, Ryan.
Well, the thing was here, it's this alphabetic order by the name, but you've got to figure out what the word is that they're alphabetizing it by, you know.
Actually, a lot of the things are in there multiple, in multiple categories. Well, no, that's not the right term. For instance, if DAS or small cell wireless is under D for DAS, it's under small cell or DAS, so it's under S. It's also under W for wireless communication facilities, comma, small cell or DAS. So each of them is in there under whatever term somebody might think to look for.
Right.
One of the reasons the tables got long.
Convenience store, gas station, and fuel dispenser are all listed.
Yeah, that makes sense. I'm just saying, I think it'd be helpful to, as a pre, as a pre-sorting system to kind of, okay, we got a whole bunch of apples here, they're different colors apples, but here you got different kinds of citrus, you know, you know what I mean?
Exactly, yeah.
We'll give it a shot. We'll probably run the potential categories by you first before I start re-sorting.
And I do, I do like the idea of it being, having that same color coding mechanism that you have with the rest of it. So maybe like the retail, I think, you know, you've got a lot of it under the business category, you know, just as an idea, maybe, maybe to help, help people visually kind of get to what they're looking for quicker. But, you know, you guys are creative and can come up with something better than what I'm thinking of right now off the fly.
Well, that's one of the challenges of plain English is to have a hierarchy of things, so.
Uh-huh.
Okay. What else?
Yeah, let's looking under this motor vehicle, then going over to vehicle and looking under it, see if the same items are over there like you guys are talking about.
Well, that's been a whole other benefit of doing this, as I mentioned under doing the tables there, I tell you, finding discrepancies has been a big thing.
Yeah.
And then all those definitions match up with the state definitions for licensing of vehicles.
Yeah.
That was an exercise all in its own.
I can see that too, yes. We'll leave me to it. That's a lot of work.
It was.
See, you guys aren't getting paid by the word or anything, are you? Like the old attorneys used to do.
I should mention, every one of these, everything that's underlined in this document is an active link. So for instance, if you are a dance instructor that wants to work a home occupation, if you click on one of these PHOs, it will take you to the home occupations. If you want to do some seasonal Christmas tree sales at your nonprofit in an SF3 district, you click on the SF3 permitted and it takes you right there. So those are the bookmarks David was talking about.
Yeah, see this Section 1108, or 11-108. So you click on that and it'll take you to this item?
Yeah.
Yes.
They'll either take you to a bookmark in the zoning regulations, or if it's a website, for instance, for a state statute, they'll take you to the website.
Can you shed some light on the, I think sometime back, we talked about a flipbook or some sort of special software that helped out? Is that going to happen or what story there?
As far as I know, that's still the intent. This document I'm producing in a Mac program called Pages, that will go to, if the city follows through on the original idea, to a company called Flipping Book that will take the document as a PDF, put it on the website in a, in an active link format that resembles a PowerPoint presentation, which most people or many people are familiar with. They understand how you go forward and back on slides. And because it's such a familiar format, it makes it even more user-friendly to people.
And just so everybody understands, I think, once these regulations go into effect, which could be possibly July-ish or possibly after that, maybe, all the properties will be subject to these and, and we're trying to hit that.
Correct. And again, no properties will be rezoned by this action.
And as far as old special use cases, those will carry the same, what they had as far as conditions. Now, if there's any overriding conditions that may go with those, how are they, how are we handling those?
All of the conditions of an ordinance will remain.
Any closing comments, Les? Mark, any thoughts related to the governing body or coordination with the governing body? Well, we're going to keep slogging along and keep pulling this all together. You all are the key members here to make this thing happen because you are the ones that will move this on to the governing body and hold the public hearing, so.
Yep.
I guess, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys for your hard work and efforts. All right.
Yep.
Well, I think that concludes our meeting. If anybody would like to...
Oh.
I guess we do have member items.
Bill Snobber isn't the secretary anymore, this old guy down here is. Bill's, Bill's the vice president, vice chairman.
Yeah, I'm secretary. I am the old guy.
We've known each other just a few years, I'll be telling you.
And when you go to the doctor and he says you've got grumpy old man syndrome, you must be a grumpy old man.
On that note, are there any member items? All right. None, okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.